Welcome to the October 17, 2023 work session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first out, we have Economic Development Week proclamation. And with us, we have Jill Thompson, she's the Director, Chris Semerling, Economic Development Specialist, and Emily Conrad, Economic Development Coordinator. All right, proclamation for Economic Development Week, October 23 through 27, 2023. Whereas, the City of Hagerstown's Department of Community and Economic Development is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, MEDA. Is that MEDA? Meta? A nonprofit organization established in 1961, whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of its members and to encourage partnerships and networking among those committed to bringing jobs and investment to Maryland. And whereas, MEDA members promote the economic well-being of Maryland by working to improve the state's business climate and the professionalism of those in the field of economic development, including other professionals with an interest in the economy of Maryland. And through its regular meetings, special programs, and projects, members address diverse issues. And whereas, the economic growth and stability of the state affects all regions and jurisdictions of Maryland and the City of Hagerstown is an important component of the state's economic success. Now therefore, I take issue Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23 through 27, 2023 as Economic Development Week in Hagerstown, Maryland, and encourage all citizens to recognize and reaffirm the importance of business development locally and statewide. Thank you so much for your work, and I mean, business is definitely booming. So, thank you.
All right, well, on behalf of our department, we would like to thank the Mayor and Council for recognizing Economic Development Week. It is a week that's recognized by the state organization that helps mobilize smaller communities to contribute economically. And what that means is that we are creating jobs in the community, we are bringing businesses to the community, and providing resources to them to help them thrive, and also creating economic mobility for our residents. So, we do this not just alone, but through partnerships with our county and state organizations, as well as, obviously, the businesses and residents who all contribute to make this a great place to live, work, and thrive. Thank you.
And just as Emily said, economic development isn't just a one-person or one-department thing. Not only is it our local and state organizations that we also partner with, but it's also our other state, sorry, other city departments as well, engineering, planning and code, public works, like department, all of us come together in order to try and make these things happen.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Now the best part of the meeting, the preliminary agenda review. A regular session, 7:00 PM, October 24, 2023. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have invocation, pledge to the flag, announcements, rules of procedure effective December 15, 2020. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for November is Tuesday, November 7. We have a work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, November 14, work session at 4:00 PM. And then Tuesday, November 21 is our regular session at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, November 28, there is no meeting scheduled.
Do you have an invocation, somebody to do that?
Council member, shouldn't. Sure. Yep, there we go. Council member, shouldn't. And we have some guests, chalk-the-walk poster contest winners. We'll have citizen comments. And the minutes from September 12, September 19, and September 26. Arkansas Agenda, Engineering Greens at Hamilton Run Stream Restoration Resource Restoration Group LLC, Tracy's Landing, Maryland, $622,923. Hagerstown Hub City Garage, additional allocation for project management. Newcomer Associates, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, $60,000. Pavement Markings, transfer unspent funds from physical year 23 to new vendor, Alpha Space Control LLC, Chambersburg, PA, $29,693.12. For fire, we have Hagerstown Fire Training Center, burn building. Jenk &amp; Sons Construction, Grandview, Missouri, $1,052,651. And then Information Technology, Barracuda Essentials Compliance Edition, one-year renewal subscription, Systems Source, Hunt Valley, Maryland, $40,085.55. Intellitime Touch Time, three time clocks, Intellitime Systems Corporation, Santa Ana, California, $59,000. Arctic Wolf Endpoint Security Licenses and Services, Winslow Technology Group, Walterham, Maine, $98,026.68. For police, we have AVCC Annual Subscription Fee, Lexus Nexus, Chicago, Illinois, $19,910. Two 2023 Chevrolet Tyhos, Hertch, Fleet Services, Milford, Delaware, $89,372. Thirty Glock Model, 47 MLS7, Atlantic Tactical, New Cumberland, PA, $27,861.60. Physical Year Reimbursement for a Community-Based Prosecutor, Board of County Commissioners, Hagerstown, Maryland, $64,397. For Public Works, we have removal of existing boiler and install new boiler at Central Equipment Building, Beaver Mechanical Contractors, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, $69,280. Janitorial Services for Elizabeth Hager Center, Fire Administration and Fire Training Center, Raglan Cleaning Services, Hagerstown, Maryland, $26,850. Bulk Road Salt, per ton price delivered, $79.41. Morton Salt LLC, Chicago, Illinois, $160,000. Utilities, Light Cost of Service Analyst and Rate Design Study, GDS Associates, Inc., Marietta, Georgia, $80,000. Water, Water Plant, residential contract, Sinagro, Baltimore, Maryland, $175,416. For water, we have two 2024 Ford Broncos to replace vehicle, two 25 and two 38 Keystone Ford, Baltimore, Maryland, $62,400. Water, Annual Generator Service Contract, Fidelity Power Systems, Sparks, Maryland, $10,249. Water and Wastewater, WNW Administration Building Renovations, Buckart Horn, York, Pennsylvania, $157,000. Wastewater, Engineering Services, Solids Processing Change Order Number Three, Black and Beach Corporation, Gaithersburg, Maryland, $56,440. Wastewater, Ferret Coride, PVS Technologies, Inc., Detroit, Michigan, $17,805. Wastewater, Pump Station 33, Pipe and Fidings, Core &amp; Main LP, Martinsburg, West Virginia, Still more. Unfinished Business, Approval of Ordinance, Quick Claim Alley, Number 2-82A. The new business, we have Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 64 of the City Code, Building Amendments. Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 64 of the City Code, Property Maintenance Updates. Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 64 of the City Code, Electrical Amendments. Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 64 of the City Code, Plumbing Amendments. Introduction of an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 64 of the City Code, Mechanical Amendments. Introduction of an Ordinance, 2023 Land Management Code Text Amendments. Introduction of an Ordinance, Local Conversion District Overlay Amendment for Cypress Street. Approval of a Resolution, Annexation at 13 through 17 Western Maryland Parkway. Approval of a Resolution, Salt Utilization Agreement with Maryland State Highway Administration. Approval of a Resolution, Authorizing the Sale of Property Located at 261 South Prospect Street. Approval of a Resolution, Rename Renaissance Way to Charlie's Way. Approval of a Resolution, Subrecipient Agreement with Brothers United Who Care. Approval of a Resolution, Subrecipient Agreement between the Hagerstown Police Department and the Washington County Health Department. Approval of a Resolution, Memorandum of Understanding with Child Advocacy Center, CAC. Approval of a Resolution, Memorandum of Understanding with Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, ATF. Approval of After-School Program at the Parkside Community Center. Approval of the Addition of Contractual Part-Time Police Officers. Approval of Field House Contract. Approval of Holiday Parking. Approval of Funding for Community Coalition Lobbyists. Approval of Physical Year 2024, Invest Hagerstown in Partners and Economic Process Progress, PEP Program Guideline Changes. City Administrator Comments, Mayor and Council Comments, and then we will adjourn. All right, next up, we have requests to purchase CDBG property, 261 South Prospect Street. And with us, we have Margie Jo, our Community Development Manager, and Amanda Gregg, our Business Community Development Finance Specialist.
I'm just a...
All right. Yay. We'll take it.
So, property at 261 to 263 South Prospect Street was purchased using Community Development Block Grant for CDBG funding for the purpose of rehabilitating this property and offering the renovation units to eligible buyers who need CDBG fund ownership program. The use of CDBG funds requires that at least one of these two units be sold to a HUD income-eligible buyer. And we received an offer of $170,000 for the unit at 261 South Prospect Street from an income-qualified applicant who has secured financing for the purchase and is prepared to move forward with next steps upon approval of the sale by this body. Through this program, we also allow for a 2.5% commission to be paid to the buyer's agent. In this case, that amount will be $4,250. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Well, I'm glad the program is working as intended.
Yeah, very excited.
That's it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you.
Naming of Renaissance Way as Charlie's Way, and we have Jim Bender, our City Engineer.
Hello. Hello, good afternoon. The city had received a request to rename Renaissance Way, which is the widened alley that leads to the A&amp;E parking deck, after Charlie Sekula, who was the longtime owner and proprietor, operator of the Schmeichel Stew Restaurant. And at the summer's August Taylor Fest celebration, they had both a petition there that attendees could sign, you know, recommending or asking that a street be named after Charlie. And they also did a online petition and gathered 758 signatures through that effort to get something, to get mainly a street named after Charlie. And after looking at, I guess, some potential alleys or streets that we could rename, it seemed like it made the most sense to pick Renaissance Way, since it's very close to the rear of the restaurant. And the engineering department has a policy for naming alleys or streets. What we do is reach out to the adjoining property owners that also touch that alley and see if any of them have an objection to naming it. And heard from all but one of the property owners, none of them had any objection to renaming it. In fact, they were pretty enthusiastic about it, because I think the South Potomac Street and Charlie were synonymous for many years. So, if the council would agree to move ahead, what we would, what staff would propose is instead of renaming Renaissance Way, we would put a supplemental name plaque, probably a white-on-brown sign above the official street sign with Charlie's Way on it. The reason is that there are already a couple existing addresses that are assigned to Renaissance Way, and we don't want to have to make them go through the process of changing their addresses to new. So, if the, if the council's in agreement with this request, then we'll do the appropriate work order through Public Works and get the sign installed.
Sounds good to me.
Absolutely. I'm just thanking very much for all the work on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you guys stay here.
I get to stay here? Get to be joined by John Whack with a little bit bigger...
This is exciting. Hagerstown Field House, a word of construction contract. Jim Bender and John Whack.
So, yeah, we've, we've reached a, hopefully, people will see this as an exciting point in the, in the Field House development project. We got to the point where we've actually opened bids on the project. And John and I are here today to present the, the results of that whole process and to talk about next steps if the council decides to move forward with the project. So, I'll let John go ahead and just show you some slides.
Good evening, everybody. So, just very briefly, this is not a long presentation. We just wanted to, as Jim said, bring you up to date of the process that we've just completed that allowed us to bring a recommendation to you for the general contractor and the overall budget. So, we went through, we talked very briefly about the bid process, the evaluation of the responses, the interviews. We went through the budget and our recommendation. So, as you guys know, the last time we were here, we updated you on the construction RFP that we went through. It is not in legal review this week. That's an old bullet point. There you go. So, but there's a schedule that we followed. The bids came in on October 3, and we're hoping that tonight, that you would make the bid award. We still have within our schedule the state contractor approval. The contractor selection criteria that we had in the RFP was the staff that they were going to assign to it, their overall qualifications, the experience that they had, their plan for conducting the work, and of course, the price that they were going to charge for the work. It was a very competitive bid, reflected in two ways. One, the number of responses we got. We had nine companies that submitted a bid. Another indication was, we had, as you guys know, you had gone all the way through to create construction documents. Many times, the bid will occur before full construction documents are made. In this instance, we had full construction documents, and I can't remember, was the total number of questions? It was over 400? Over 400 questions. So, that was evidence that the contractors, I think, were very much sharpening their pencils and trying to get the last bit of information so that they could get the most competitive price. And I think the bids that came in reflected that. When they came in, we reviewed them all for completeness and compliance with the requirements that were set out, and then we scored them. And we had three different teams score them. The city team, Eastern Sports Management Team, and our partner in this process that has a great deal of experience in managing construction, specifically in sports facilities, they also scored. We then took those scores and averaged them and came up with a ranking. Of the nine, two really stood out as being separate in their scores, but in the averaged scores. But really, across all five judgment evaluation categories, they stood out. So, we pulled those two firms in last Friday, last Friday, and we interviewed them. And again, the same groups that did the evaluation were present in the interview, representatives of the city, representatives of ESM and of Pinnacle, but also the fourth group, the architecture group that was involved in the design. We did an hour and a half interview with each group, and then following both interviews, we held a group discussion and came to a consensus. The team is recommending Waynesboro Construction. So, now that the bid is in, and I'm not sure if you could see that, but we're able to sort of summarize of how this whole process has, has come through from the very beginning. As you guys remember, the very first thing we did is, we just did a floor plan and a business plan, and it was just a two-page floor plan. And with that, we went, and this was back in '22, which was at the front end, is that '22? That's '22. Which is at the front end of the inflationary period that the whole country went through. You guys then elected to try to get to the next level of detail on pricing, which was the 35% plans. And so, when we got to the end of that, we went out using data that Pinnacle had, data that we had, and we also went out to the general contracting community to, to develop that price. And that came in, in August of '22. We then went to full construction plans, and that is what we finished in August of this year. As you could see, the price moved a little bit, but those 35% plans, because we had held enough, I think, contingencies and escalations, we were able to sort of figure out where the market was headed, I mean, not completely, but as you could see, we applied some of those escalations up to the numbers as they came in. And now, we've got the final bid in, and it's pretty darn close to where we thought it was going to land. And so, that's the overall project budget, and I think, Jim, you've got a few things to say about that. It represents, in that total, dollars that have already been spent.
Right.
Some dollars that have already been spent.
So, and I think to amplify what John said about the selection of Waynesboro, Waynesboro was the low bidder on the project, and they were also the highest scoring of the two when we scored them. So, those are two other factors that made us feel confident in our recommendation. And so, we did the interviews last Friday, and it was too late to get information into the packet, so I gave Donna handouts that hopefully you have that provide some additional information. The first sheet is sort of related to what John has on the overall project budget, but it's a little bit different. It's looking at, from this point forward, if we decide to go ahead with the project, here are the costs that...
Let's see that again.
It's, yeah, it's fine. Here are the costs that the city would have going forward to complete the project. So, we've got Waynesboro Construction's bid plus some additional alternate construction that they're going to do. We, at some point, are going to do a separate contract for the furniture, fixture, and equipment, which is the FF and E, and also the audiovisual and IT wiring and, and equipment that goes into the building. But John and his group have been chasing that number down, and they feel that that $4.3 million number is pretty solid. We know that we're going to have some costs for inspection and testing during the construction. The developers' agreement, which has already been approved by the council, had an allocation in it for $400,000 in basically project management fees for John and his group, and an additional $40,000 to $50,000 for reimbursable expenses. So, that's, that's a cost that will be coming through if we move forward. We didn't really have good information on commissioning. Commissioning is a process that when you build a new building, usually, there's a third party that comes in and they test the equipment, mainly the HVAC equipment, just to make sure that it's working correctly, that it's balanced, that it, the building's going to function the way that we want to. And when I put this, this chart together, that really, that $100,000 was really just a placeholder. John gave me some information after he got here this afternoon, that that number is probably higher than it needs to be, but for now, we're leaving that, we'll leave that $100,000 placeholder in there. And then contingencies, we've allocated $500,000, half a million dollars in contingencies, which, to be honest, for a project of this size, is not a very big contingency. But that's kind of where we've, throughout this process, that's kind of where we've landed with the contingency. So, if you add all those costs up, that gets us to about $24.7 million. And then there's some additional, additional fees that are going to be coming from the architecture group as they review shop drawings and help with construction management. And the way that we're proposing to handle that is doing an amendment to the existing consulting services agreement with, through ESM to add that cost in. So, that's a little over $200,000. So, you total all that up, cost going forward, assume nothing, that we run out of contingency money, is just under $25 million. And so, that's where, that's where the difference is. John's numbers include fees or costs that we've already had getting to this point. So, that's why he's at, you know, the overall cost of the project is $26 million. We've still got about $25 million that we need to figure out how to, how to finance or fund. So, the second page of the handout is actually information that Michelle supplied on the funding plan as we know it right now. There are still some unknowns, but generally, it's a combination of state capital grants, local funds, that some of those were general fund transfers. ARPA funds are going to be used on this project. We received the hotel motel money from the county. There was a state strategic demolition, demolition grant that we received, and then the redirection of the 911 funding from the county that would go into this. So, those are, I'll, I'll call them potential funding sources, which we're kind of counting on, but there are two, two line items that we are going to have to bond finance. One is ESM through the developers' agreement and the, and through the lease agreement that we still need to finalize. Part of that agreement is that over the, I think it's a 20-year title, that, that ESM is basically guaranteeing a return of $7 million or contribution of $7 million to the, to the project. But we don't have that money upfront, so we're going to have to carry that in bond financing. That still leaves us about a little over $10 million that we don't have a funding source identified at this point. So, putting those two numbers together, we're probably looking at bonding between $17 and $18 million to move ahead with this project. And I, I mean, we're going to get more clarity on the financing over the next month to two months as we see what's available and we, we verify some of these costs, but that's generally the range we're in. And then the third page of the handout is just sort of laying out if the council decides to move forward, here are, here are the actions that are going to be coming up both next week at the regular session and then in November and in the months beyond. So, at the regular session meeting, the construction contract with Waynesboro Construction would be awarded. We'd authorize the additional money that's in the contract for contingencies and some of those other costs that are not in Waynesboro's, their bid. And we'd also want to approve that amendment to the consulting services agreement, which is also attached to your handout. And that provides funding for the architect services to review shop drawings and do construction management type of stuff. And also, another consultant is going to be brought in to help us with some geotechnical consulting on the project as that goes forward. So, that's what that amendment would be about. So, that would be at the regular session next week. And then in November, we've got a couple other things to continue to work on. At some point, we'll probably do a fourth amendment to that consulting services agreement, and that's going to be for the procurement of the FF and E stuff. So, we need to, we need to do that. So we need to, we need to do that. That's that $4.3 million number. We have been working on the lease agreements with ESM, and I think we're very close to finishing that. We were just waiting on some final FFNE numbers and clarification, and I think we, I think we have that now, so I'm hoping that we can finalize that and bring that to the council in November. As I said, working with Michelle, we're going to, over time, have to figure out what is the final financing plan for the project. And then we also have to submit, once the, the contract is awarded to Waynesboro Construction, then we need to submit a package to Department of General Services because they have to concur that we followed the proper procedure in selecting the contractor and that they approve of our, or they agree with our recommendation. So that is, that is really it. I, I think we're, we're to the point now where we've got the bids, we, we know generally what all the costs are, and we're to the point where the, we're just looking for the direction then from the council if you'd like to move forward with the project.
What's the level of confidence that you have if we were to proceed with selection at this time, that we would get concurrence from the state that we have proceeded through, you know, the appropriate path?
I feel confident. We had the project out to bid for more than 30 days, which is their minimum. We had a pretty robust scoring matrix that we used to, to score all these proposals that looked at those factors that John had up on the screen. I think it's, I think our process has been very defensible, and I don't really see why anyone would, would take any issue with the way that we proceeded through this process. So I, I feel confident that we'll, it may, may not happen as quickly as we would like it to, but I think we will, I'm confident we'll get state approval.
And Jim, just two things. The contractor, where possible, is looking to use MBE subcontractor, which is, you know, another advantage in another area that the state of Maryland likes to see groups followed when they're returning for capital grants and also for bond bill, money that they give out. And then last but not least is the company is currently longstanding with the state of Maryland. So that's another indication that, you know, another, another item we're going to check hopefully that gets us a step closer with this further selection.
Have we specified within that contractual process what percent or any specific percent of MBE the contractor would use? We're leaving that up to the contractor to identify.
Yeah. I mean, the, the direction or the indication that we got from the, the state is, you know, MBE and MBE participation is always, always desirable, you know, and they, they'd like to see that the contractors have at least made an effort to identify and use minority businesses where possible, but there is no specific target that we were asked to hit.
And the state of Maryland, at one point, using 35%, but again, understanding that different areas throughout the state of Maryland, the further away that we get, the less number of MBE groups and subcontractor, subcontractors that there are available will also need to be part that's written in.
And Waynesboro, to their credit, they actually brought a, a three-ring binder with, I don't know how many pages in it, where they, they have a database of MBE subcontractors that they reached out to and said, you know, are you interested in, in giving us a price on, you know, your portion of the work for this project? And I think that they did get pricing back. I'm not sure, we'd have to study that a little bit to see if they, I think they have at least one that they have integrated into their project. I don't know how many of the others, or how the, that pricing came in and whether or not it was low enough to be competitive that they included it in their bid or not. But they did make an effort, certainly.
Okay.
You guys have any more questions?
Has Waynesboro Construction done anything to the scale? Were you asking them to budget for the scale?
Yeah, in their, in their proposal, the other thing that we asked them to do is provide company information and, and information that provided, gave us some level of comfort of their experience. And Waynesboro is, is known locally here as one of the, one of the bigger commercial contractors they've done work for. Meredith, they've done work for HCC, they were, you know, they've, they've been around, they've been involved in a number of projects. And certainly what they submitted with their proposal, they were, you know, very smartly trying to highlight facilities that were sports-related that they have worked on. And so they've done a number of schools, they've done some other athletic facilities. And really, for this project, I mean, I don't want to speak for John, but the, other than the sports package part of it, there's, there's nothing really that exotic about this, this building or the, the construction. It's not something that you would need a, a really specialized general contractor to do. I think it's, it's sort of normal-type construction. It's the, the sports add-on is the, the part that they may not have a lot of experience with, but that's, they're not going to be installing that, that, no, no, well, through John is going to be providing and installing that.
But, but they clearly, in the materials that they had provided, showed us that they had enough experience in that area, mostly through scholastic work, through middle schools and high schools. I believe they did the, I hope I got this right, the last three schools in Washington County, I believe they built. And so while those athletic facilities within those schools are not of the scale of this one, they still are athletic facilities. Additionally, some of the personnel that they have on their team, not only through that company, but through other companies they have been in, had very much more specific large sports facility experience.
Great. Thank you.
Any more questions? You guys good?
I have a question.
Yeah? Okay.
Not sure if this is appropriate. I'll just go ahead and do it anyway.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once we get to the part where you guys officially approve it, we're going to light up the website and start the marketing agreement, start all the marketing, and so you guys are at the front edge of that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have wholesale...
Just to be clear, this will be up for vote next week.
Yeah. Yep.
All three of them.
Yes.
Yep. Wholesale power service agreement, and we have Nathan, Deputy Director of Electric Operations. Is that Brad Dinger?
Frydinger.
Frydinger. I didn't want to ask that. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Hi, Nathan.
Hello. Good afternoon. So our wholesale power services agreement is due to expire May 31, 2024. I wanted to come up here this evening and give you an update where we are today. We are currently going through negotiations with a few different providers, so there's a possibility that, that we may not extend a contract or another amendment with, with the current provider, Energy Harbor. We could go with another. The, the prices are very competitive. As you can see, the energy market hasn't really been very kind to us. Last year, this time, it was absolutely horrible, above $55 per kilo, or megawatt hour. Today, things have stabilized. They're between $45, $50 per megawatt hour. Using some, some assumptions, I'm projecting that our purchase power cost adjustment that's calculated monthly, that average for the year could be driven up approximately $0.02 per kilowatt hour. So the average customer bill today with 1,000 kilowatt hours, they see $70 today. During this contract, on average, they could see up to a $90 bill, which is $20 increase. However, we do expect to, to stay about $0.2 lower than the Potomac Edison rate, which is, we would estimate theirs to be about 110 with the same kilowatt hour use. So that Figure 2 chart indicates our, our megawatt hour rate since 2006. Obviously, you know, throughout the years, we've dropped down to the current rates, 42, 42 per megawatt hour, but this chart also throws in the, the ancillary charges of the, the network integrated transmission service charges and, and the transmission pass-throughs that we, that we see today. Equivalent mark where we project to be will relate to our rates back in 2011. And so, yeah, if you guys have any questions, I might be able to answer them.
Questions?
No, Ivan?
No?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Municipal utility cybersecurity program, and Nathan, Deputy Director of Electric Operations, and then Jason Batchell, Electrical Engineering Manager. Did I say your last name?
Bechtel.
Bechtel.
Thank you. So stopped by tonight just to let you know of a funding opportunity that we have through the Federal Department of Energy. They are offering a contest, instead of a grant period, to compete for funds towards cybersecurity for rural and municipal electric cooperatives to help protect our systems from cyber intrusion. It's in the news a lot now with hacking and different things like that. So we were directed to inform you of this process, and we will be competing with other rural and municipal utilities across the nation for these funds. There's approximately $9 million up for grabs amongst hundreds of utilities. We're just one of the small ones. There are three portions of this contest. We're in the initial portion now, and after all three portions, if we're successful, we could receive up to $200,000 in funding towards training, technical assistance, and consulting to help us improve our cybersecurity posture, which is ever more important now with our advanced SCADA systems and our automated metering infrastructure. So we're going to be doing that. We're in phase one now. Phase one and phase two, we could get $50,000. Phase three, if we're successful, another $100,000 for that total of $200,000.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, Jason.
Hagerstown Police Department grant agreement with Washington County Health Department, Chief Paul Billy Kifer, and Mark Chaney, our Support Services Administrator. Where do you go?
I didn't bring Mark down with me today, so. So, good evening. We're here just requesting approval to enter into a contract with the Health Department to become a sub-recipient to a grant that they have for the amount of $54,000. This would provide reimbursement to us for overtime for our lead program, which is the law enforcement assisted diversion program that we run with them. The activities and training goes along with that, along with a additional training that we can use towards human sex trafficking and the illicit drug summit that's coming up for prescription drug stuff. So it would really just dramatically help us with the costs that we don't have to incur. We can get through the grant through them. But part of the process for these grants, we have to get into a, a contract to be able to accept those grants legally, deal all that, so that's what I'm here for.
You guys good?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And contractual part-time police officers. Chief, take it away.
So again, I'm here tonight to get approval to hire up to four part-time police officers if we can find them and, and find the interested parties to do so. They would be used not as a patrol function, they wouldn't be out answering calls for service, but they would be assignment-driven. They would augment our patrol options to free up the, the men and women that are handling the calls for service. So that, given example, beginning of the summer, spring, summer, and we're having all the problems in skate park and all the activities that were going on there, I could, I could have part-time officers work that as their duty assignment. That would free up the officers that are out handling the regular calls for service. Sheets, the issues we've had out there, we could augment that by having part-time officers work that area, and again, free up our, our officers. As you know, staffing's always been a challenge for us, and I don't think in our profession that's ever going to go away anymore. I think that's just the reality of law enforcement. So trying to find innovative ways to provide that same level of service that we can provide is what I'm trying to do here. So again, no guarantee we can find someone that's going to come in and work, work these assignments, but I'd like to have the option. With that said, I'm not asking for any additional money. We have found money in our budget to be able to cover the costs to, to manage this, and we would be looking to bring these officers in as long as they have the experience level at the, the Step 15 level of our, our police officers. If they come in with less than that, then they would be, they would be paid accordingly hourly by that rate. And then that, that hopefully was an attractor for that, but with the cost savings that we have, with some salary savings this year, I can, I could hire some this year. My goal would be to hire two, if I can find two now, and then two after the fiscal year starts for '25, that we would hire two more within our budget. With the savings that we're projecting, with the reduction in the 911 center cost that we're going to be paying to the county would more than help to supplement the cost for this. So again, that money, it's already in my budget, I could just repurpose without asking for additional money from this council and this body. So that's what I'm here for.
You guys good?
Yeah. It's a need.
Yeah? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
Senator Minister.
So the mayor and I attended the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference the last couple of days down in College Park. Pretty extensive fall conference as opposed to many of the others before. I can tell you that I had several folks from other municipalities, all areas of the state, extremely interested in our field house and the stadium. And literally looking at us as, as the one guy called us, we'll be a sports mecca in Maryland. And I also included the fairgrounds, I included the BMX track, the ice skating, the ice rink, and City Park as venues for travel teams to come in, and, and several asked, you know, how we did it and what we were doing, and I said, well, once we're done, I'll tell you. But I'm not going to tell you until then. Also, the drone program, several municipalities came up. Joey's probably going to be getting several calls here coming up. People want to know about the drone program, how we use it, what the results have been. I was able to give them the results on the dirt bikes and, and several of the drug arrests we've made. So that was, that was very encouraging. Also, extremely surprised and, and really good discussion about tax fairness for municipalities in the state of Maryland. As it relates to our residents, I think you're going to see a significant push on creating tax fairness in all municipalities in the state over the next several months, but then I see this as probably a two-to-three-year deal moving forward as it relates to tax deductions and tax differentials. We are not alone in that, and we have, you know, people think that we've kind of been dogged on this, there, there are some, especially on the eastern shore, some pretty proactive discussions going on on the eastern shore. So looking forward to those discussions. Had pretty good FaceTime with Lieutenant Governor, with the Governor this morning. Congressman Trone last night had sat and talked to us quite a bit about, about Hagerstown, and it's, it's just nice to go to the, I can remember going to these things and it was, where's Hagerstown? And now, nobody has to, nobody asks that anymore. In fact, it's, what's Hagerstown doing? Why, you know, how, how's Hagerstown doing? So it's, it was really good. And the mayor had several... And the mayor, uh, had several shout-outs, which was, which was very cool. We got to see former Mayor Keller, she presented today. And, uh, it's just very, um, it, it, the residents, taxpayers should be proud as to what the city is, how the city's being represented and how, uh, more being progressive. And, and the field house again is, uh, we took, I, y'all will take a huge step next week if you approve this and, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a showcase. So, uh, that's, that's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Schindler, what are you doing over there?
Oh, I had to.
Balancing out?
Balancing out a little bit, yeah.
Please send him over again.
You sent him over there?
So, uh, speaking of, uh, ex-Mayor Keller, uh, last Wednesday, um, had the opportunity to go attend the, um, Community Overdose Town Hall. That was a really great event, you know, just a lot of our local, um, citizens and organizations coming over to try to figure out a problem, you know, try to figure out some solutions to the opioid issue. So, uh, it was really great to see that. Uh, and just a shout-out to Chief and HPD for some of the creative solutions they're coming up with in policing issues. I think it's great to see and great that we're kind of leading the way, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burnett?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Asha?
I don't have anything this evening.
Oh, okay.
I had one thing real quick before you go.
Sure.
Uh, Eric Dyke wasn't here tonight. He's under, he's feeling under the weather. But the BMX, uh, event went on over the weekend and pretty crappy weather on Saturday. But all in all, for a first event to the magnitude of people that they had, which was huge. I don't know if the fairgrounds has ever entertained that many people. All in all, I think it went extremely well. Could be some kinks to work out, some of the parking issues, some of the, um, local shortcutting issues that, uh, some of the residents were upset about. Some security issues related to bikes, but HPD, uh, came, uh, came riding in and, and helped alleviate a lot of those concerns. So I just want to congratulate everybody who worked on that BMX project. Uh, city staff and, and the residents, uh, for pulling off, and CBB for, I think, pulling off a very, very well-done event. So I just wanted to add that, sorry.
I was gonna make a paper airplane and throw it to you, but it's right there. I didn't have enough time. I, I promise you, I was gonna make a paper airplane. Um, there's a letter of support, uh, from the city, um, of Hagerstown for condemnation of violence in Israel and Gaza. Are you guys okay with it or do you want to make edits? Do you wanna?
Um, I'm fine with the, the draft letter because it recognizes both the Israeli and the Palestinian people of what's happening right now. And it's unfortunate because many lives have been lost and the people in Gaza are dealing with atrocities as well. And I think we all can agree that, um, no one should be burying their loved member, or loved ones, nor should the children be put in this situation. So, um, the fact that this letter acknowledges both, you know, condemning, um, Hamas for her actions as well as supporting both Israel and Palestine, I'm fine with it.
Councilmember? Hey, real quick, do you guys, um, do you want to do executive session before regular session next week? Or you want to do wait executive session the first week in November to talk about, um, the, yeah?
The vacancy.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mark, Councilmember McIntyre won't be here next week.
Next week, so we'll, okay.
November.
Yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Yep.
All right, there it is. And Christine, you still reading?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And so while Kristen's doing that, um, there's some things going on this weekend. Friday, October twentieth and, um, twenty-seventh, oh, it's sold out. Hagerstown, Hager House Ghost Tours. Learn the haunting tales that keep this eighteenth-century resident of town founder Jonathan Hager at the top of Maryland's most haunted sites. Sold out, that's pretty cool. Uh, the community yard sale is Saturday, October twenty-first, seven AM to two P, two PM, and all stalls are full. Um, so make sure you go out and attend the fall community yard sales in the stalls located at Fairgrounds Park and enjoy shopping outdoors for bargains along a stretch of seventy-two yard sale vendors. Um, and then our Harvest Hoedown, presented by Maryland Physicians Care, Saturday, October twenty-first. It's twelve, from twelve to four at Fairgrounds Park. And it's a family, family-friendly fall activities like pony rods, pumpkin painting, balloon giveaways, food and craft vendors, petting zoo, and face painting. The first one thousand children receive a free pumpkin and an apple. And, um, back to the letter.
You're asking if we support sending this out?
Um, it would, it would be, it would be a press, it wouldn't go to anybody in particular. It would just be a statement from the council and would probably be part of a press release.
So, Ian, I, I'm just curious if we, if we have reached out because I feel like in this letter, we're speaking for citizens that live with this, in this community that are obviously much more directly and intimately, uh, knowledgeable and associated with, uh, the current events. I'm just curious if we've reached out to, to those respective, uh, citizenry, um, to, I don't know. I think we're gonna say this and I just don't want the inference to be, "Well, you never reached out, you know, to the Jewish community in Hagerstown to see if this is how we feel," or, uh, the Muslim community, you know, to see if, if, if how the, you know, some, I guess that's my curiosity.
I can do that first if you like, then.
It just seems, yeah, I don't mind what this says. I, I feel like it generally encompasses what we probably feel. I just, you know, I just don't want to be on the end of, you know, "How dare you and how dare you." Because I just don't have the intimate level of understanding, um, or association with, that those members of our community do. So, I would prefer we run it by and say, "Hey."
Okay. I'll do that. You guys okay with that?
Yes, that's a very good point.
Okay.
What's yours, bud?
Oh, yeah. All right, I guess we, I guess we can go. With that, we're adjourned. I guess we'll leave.
Still, so much work to do.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I have Chief Keifer from HPD with me. I'll get to you in just a second, Chief. But let me start with one of the highlights of the night from the meeting, and that is certainly the awarding of the contract for the Hagerstown Fieldhouse project. A long time coming, it seems, you know, with all of the funding options that have been out there, attempting to secure funding in many different ways. And now it really becomes real because with the contract ostensibly, and still, all the i's are dotted and the t's are not crossed just yet, with Waynesboro Construction. But Waynesboro Construction is the firm that has been recommended by staff and Eastern Sports Management at this point. So next week it will become formal, we think, if the council should vote that way in order to award that contract officially to Waynesboro Construction. Just a couple of the highlights in there. Nine competitive bids were received, and Waynesboro Construction was not only the low bidder, but also the high scorer, as City Engineer Jim Bender pointed out. Altogether, this is just under a $25 million project. Pretty good in terms of the way that it shaped up initially, as far as the numbers have played out. It was about a $22 million project when it was conceptualized, and now just about $25 million. You think about the amount of time that's gone by, prices have gone up, but again, pretty good factoring in here to get to about $25 million. The bond funding will be about $17 to $18 million. And there is one other caveat, although City Engineer Bender did say that he was very confident that the state will approve and sign off on the contractor, which again is Waynesboro Construction. But first things first, the next step will be next week with the formal action by the council. So that takes care of the Hagerstown Fieldhouse and the award of the construction contract for now. Stay tuned on that. There is much more to come. But let me now turn to Chief Keifer. Chief, thanks for being here. I know it's been one heck of a challenge when it comes to police work just in general. We've seen that all throughout the country for a long period of time, and you've certainly not been immune to that here in the city of Hagerstown. And that innovative, creative thinking and putting some of those processes into play is really what HPD has become known for. You think about the drones, you think about staffing, and one of the items on the agenda this evening had to do with staffing. So if you could talk about that a little bit with the four potential part-timers that could be coming onboard, how you came up with that concept, and where you hope it goes?
Well, thanks. Thanks for having me on tonight. And to be fair, I'll get credit for these ideas, I'll get credit for the concepts, but it's a team. It's my staff. We have discussions-
I think you get blamed for enough individually anyway, so sometimes you can take a little more credit. But no, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, the staff, we discuss these issues all the time with staff, always down to the officer level. And I've always been open to the ideas from my staff to look at anything they've come to the table with, whether it's operational, you know, tactical. And so a lot of these things have come through with, you know, the guys and gals that are doing the work, that are meeting other contacts, meeting vendors and these other entities that have these things that are out there, and they're like, hey, can we look at this? Can we do that? Should we do this? And, you know, where I play the part is, you know, I'm the guy that says, yeah, let's take it to the council or not. But we do a lot of vetting on that. I have civilian staff, I have people that really help me with the financing and the budgetary side of it, which is always another big challenge, you know, in any government entity, really. So a lot of what we try to come to this table with is ideas that I don't need to ask for more money for. I just, let me repurpose the money that I have to be as efficient as I can be. So, you know, yes, more cops is always what we really want, and we're going to continue to try to do that. But to give an update on where we're at with that, so I'm authorized at 91. We've got, oh, two, we hired two additional people today, Monday started, and next week I have two additional more going in for the academy. So for this academy, after next week, I'll have 12 people going into the academy, which is unheard of for us, to be in that number range. And barring losing anyone else, we'll be at 89, 89 of our 91 people, one staff. Now, they won't be on the street, they're not actually working yet because they're in, they'll be in training, but we've worked hard over the last several years with the downturn of staffing to really raise our numbers up and get them back up. And innovations in terms of how we advertise and how we approach that and how we innovated the testing phases of it. So very proud of my staff, very proud of everybody for what they've done to really bring this back to that, to that level and to give us those opportunities to do those things we want to do with staff. But in lieu of staff, you've got to be innovative, you've still got to do the job. And I've said, and I've said to you, and I've said to this body, and I've said in the public, you know, and I'll continue to say, you're never going to hear me have an excuse that we can't do something just because I don't have staff.
That's true.
Because that is not reality. The reality is that we are to provide a service to our community, and we're going to find a way to do that whether I've got 90 or whether I got 70. And again, a credit to our staff that, that work really hard when there's less people, that they've really been able to provide this community the service they do. But to give them help, to help them with what we can do is, you know, we've started some, some different concepts. We started the Watch Center, and that's been a huge success for us. We've got civilian staff, whether it's retired law enforcement or dispatchers and, and just people that's come in that's learned how to get trained up, are handling police-related calls over the phone, that's minimizing the amount of calls our guys have to go to and answer in real time out on the street, which frees them up for those more serious calls, those more police, police-related calls. And it provides us to give that service. I mean, we're looking at, we set a goal for 30% of the police calls that we take in, service to advise calls, basic report calls that can be handled over the phone. And at times during the day, we've met that goal. So we're looking to increase the amount of hours that the Watch Center actually works over the, over the week, and we're going to add three hours, I think, each day to that part-time staff that come in and do that. So we've got a great staff that does that from the Watch Center. I can't say enough about the men and women that come in and do that for us as well. So that's been a huge success. Drones, obviously, the big thing that everybody sees, and that's the big, the big, and truly it is.
Yeah.
And-
And that's a big part of it, because people have to see and recognize for it to be impactful.
Right. Yeah, and they don't see it with the Watch Center. They don't, you know, the general public doesn't understand that part of it, but internally, we, we know, the men and women in the department know that. So, but the drones act as an force multiplier for us. I mean, I can put a drone up in the sky, and it takes the place of multiple officers that are trying to look at an area. So to be able to do that, to have a drone go up that feeds that feed to my phone, I can watch from my home, I can be in Florida and watch what's going on on my vacation. But to have that feed go up and have that drone officer fly that drone, then when we need the staff to react to something that's, that's there, we can, we can do that. So we're looking at innovations there. There's new programs out that have drones as first responders. We're looking at that, where a drone would be mounted onto a rooftop and literally would take off on a call that we would dispatch that drone out. The drone will go out and do that for us, fly to the area, if there's nothing there, would fly back. Again, saving us that. So we don't have that yet. That's something that we're looking at possibly putting in our budget in the future year or years. But that's, I think, the future where we're going with, with drones to help us out with that. We use small drones to fly interior, interiorly into homes during search warrants. Again, helps us to protect the men, men and women on our SWAT, our SWAT team that are going in, and to protect people inside the house. We're not having to go in armed and aggressive. We can slow things down, we can fly the drone in and clear the buildings little by little. And that's been a huge success for us as well, and it's a safety mechanism, it's what the state wants us to do, it's what everyone in society wants us to do to be more cautious. So we're taking and using technology as best we can to do those things. Our camera system is the best around. I mean, our, the software system we bought for our camera system, the cameras have solved so many crimes and has done so much for us.
Yeah, and where isn't there a camera anymore?
Yeah.
Which is obviously part of the plan and the strategy.
Right. Yeah, and again, we're looking to expand the camera system that we have. Right now, we're finishing up our last phase in the West End. That, that string, that, that run's going to be done here soon with all the cameras. So the proposal I'm going to be coming to the table again with is to expand primarily downtown here with the stadium coming. We wanted to incorporate camera systems, if at all possible, into the alleyways and some other areas where people are going to be traveling, you know, on pedestrian. We want people coming here, visiting and attending the events to be safe and feel safe and give us better eyes on, on the area. And our Watch Center people can be watching those cameras when we have events going on and just adding the eyes near. Again, multiply without having staff to literally be in those areas because we just don't have it. We can do that now with technology. So those are a lot of the things we're talking about. And then staffing, you know, again, as I said tonight, I think this is the, this is the normalcy of, of law enforcement anymore. And we've taken us a couple of years to kind of come to that realization, but I believe, you know, if you accept that and you realize, okay, how do we do things differently? Again, staff brought, you know, a while back, this has been a couple of years ago, we've talked about this, using part-time police officers to come in. I know a lot of places around the country do that kind of thing differently. They call them reservist officers, and they're, we're going to utilize the, you know, hopefully we're going to be bringing in retired or people that left law enforcement for whatever reason. They still have to go through the background process like anybody else, they still have to pass things, they still have to be trained just like we are, they still have to meet all their requirements that, that the state requires full-time officers to meet. They would have law enforcement powers to arrest. But knowing that I'm not going to get somebody to want to come in here and get into a police car and drive around and answer calls for service when they've been retired, I can provide them the opportunity to work events, I can work that, things that we need help with. And with the stadium coming and, and all that, I can literally hire them, have them work those areas. I can have them work BMX. You know, we had the BMX event this weekend, I could add staff there, I can, I can still do overtime for my staff, but I can supplement that with some additional part-time staff to go in there and just give us that visibility and that protection that we need. They can take reports, they can make arrests, they can do those things. But, but to give them that direction that's specific to what we want them to do during times that we want them to do it. So, you know, trying to work within union contracts and all those other things that, you know, the general public doesn't quite feel and understand, these are just innovative ways that, that we constantly have these conversations and constantly trying to figure out, how do we, how do we still provide that service? And how do we give better service, if, if at all possible, without having to wait until we've got 100 officers? And honestly, I'm hoping that all the technology that we're using and all the stuff that we're doing will attract more officers, younger people to come in, knowing that they can fly a drone, that's part of their job, that they can do these things, that it's not just, you know, this, this scary thing that unfortunately society has put on us, that it's a job that nobody wants to do.
Right.
We're finding a lot more people applying for us. We're finding that we're seeing a lot more people want to get involved. I think that scare is starting to subside. But whatever's going on in society generally with people wanting to fill jobs is just still baffled me somewhat, but we're not seeing that, that huge influx to come into our, into our ranks. So we're going to, we're going to plan, you know, always try to get that, but we're going to plan on how do we supplement that with technology and other innovative ways of patrolling and working and-
Sure.
And then one of the other things we've, we've done here recently is we're beta testing two programs. One that we've had before, which is the Community Resource Officer Program. That was a standalone specialized unit program that had to be disbanded a few years back, and we lost a lot of our members, and we had to get them back into patrol. We now have three officers, one assigned to each shift. That's a Community Resource Officer, they've been trained. And their assignment, when they go to work that day, is to be the Community Resource Officer. They can still answer calls, they still work with on the shift, they're not a standalone unit. And we did the same thing with detectives, we made shift-level detectives. We're, we're beta testing that, where low-level crimes can be pushed down to those detectives and free up the minimal staff or the less staff that we have in our detective bureau to handle major crimes. Again, freeing up, being more efficient, more effective. We're going to beta test these two programs until about the first of the year, and if all goes well and we, we find that's working pretty well and we can handle the calls for service and do that, then we're going to look to add one CRO and one detective per shift to have two, so that we have that coverage seven days a week because when the guys are off. So, you know, that today, if you and I are the CRO, you might be assigned the CRO and I'm assigned just to work a beat. Tomorrow, I get the CRO assignment and you're working a beat. So it's a way for us to, to give some additional responsibility that the men and women want, but again, to be more efficient. And CRO to be preventive and working on long-term solutions, detectives to do the follow-up and reactive to crimes that's already occurred and, and bring justice to those that did those. I just think that it's the best of all worlds that, you know, we can give the men and women that get into this job or profession these things that they really want to do-
Right.
-instead of just, you know, showing them and just handling calls for service and going home. And, and we have guys that want to do that, that love doing that and, and do that great. And then we have guys that want to do those other things, it's just without opportunities they can't. So we're trying to find innovative ways to satisfy our workforce, but at the same time refine that service that, that, you know, enhances what we're doing. So that, so far, we've been doing that for about a month, and so far, so good. We'll see how that goes.
Yeah, I, I know you operate within a lot of parameters, and I, I had a number of questions. I think you answered most of the questions, to be honest. But one question that I do have, and you hit on a lot of those challenges and, and the things that, that sort of provide hurdles that you have to get over, and, and one of them can be a hurdle, it could also be a help, and that is the legislators. And I know that they've done things both positively and negatively. Sometimes when they make decisions, it's not necessarily for Washington County or Hagerstown specifically, and it really trickles down from elsewhere, and, and that makes it difficult. But I, I know City Administrator Nice Warner had mentioned with some of the potential priorities for the upcoming General Assembly coming up in January, one of those things that's already being talked about by the Maryland Municipal League is some of those civilians who could potentially be part of a police unit in a way where they could do some of those things, some of those tasks that you mentioned earlier, that would get those officers out on the street, would enable them to do the things that they really should be doing and probably want to be doing versus some of the paperwork, some things that might, you know, have to do with speed cameras or, or things of that nature. So, so does that quantify a little bit the thinking and the innovation that you've kind of been able to foster within HPD? I mean, does, does that sound pretty good to you that you have folks like that who are, who are thinking the same way and want to go to the legislators with, you know, these types of proposals?
It does. And one of the things you're, you're mentioning about the civilian aspect is that, you know, currently with the speed cameras in Maryland, it requires a police officer to review-
Right.
-before it's accepted that it goes out as a citation. And, and there's no real reason for that, other than it's just written in the law that way. You know, if that could be rewritten or adjusted to make it a civilian position, then the officer that I have assigned to that function would free up hours each day that he spends just doing that function because of requirement. That's, that's definitely a plus. And fortunately, unfortunately, you know, in our, in our state, in our government, you know, civilians go into politics and to make laws and to listen to their constituents. The unfortunate side is that there's always unfortunate consequences to decisions they make-
Right.
-because in, in large part, we don't have the people in the know that counter those, those ideas to provide, okay, you want to reach, you want to reach this idea of making things better here, you're going too far this way or too far that way. If you, if you do this, you can accomplish most of what you want, because either way, you're never getting there.
Yeah.
So we just don't have that level of government that works like that here. And so, but hopefully, you know, some of those things can be pulled back some-
Yeah.
-in the, in the coming legislative sessions that, that are causing those, those problems for us.
And, and it must feel good to have the, the backing on, on the local level, though. And, and as you said, you, you help yourself a lot by not coming before mayor and council and saying, I need money for this. You, you find a way to make sure that you can pay for those things that you're asking for, which certainly helps the cause without question. But at the same time, I, I would guess that you have to feel pretty good about the support that you get from those who sit at this table.
I have, I will say, and I've always said, that I've never had anyone on this, this body not support what I'm doing, or not support what we are doing in, in our law enforcement. I don't see that anywhere in any of the city departments, but speaking for myself, I don't, I don't see that, never have felt that. I've always been mindful that the money that is in my budget isn't to be spent willy-nilly, and it's to be a good steward to the people that have provided that money to us, and to be as efficient in spending that as I am at doing the stuff to provide that service. And it's just something that's been instilled in me by my parents a long time ago, that you, you treat that budget as if it's your money and how you would spend it. So I always want to come in with a, you know, a, a solution to how I can get there instead of just, I want to do this, can you give it to me?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think coming in and, and there's rarities when I've, when I've had to ask for an increase, or I've had to have something that, that may cost more money, you know, I think it just bodes well that I've, that I try my hardest just to repurpose what I already have to be better efficient at what I'm doing, so that we don't have to impact the taxpayers, that we don't have to increase those things, or, or we don't have to take away from another department, because I don't want to do that either.
Right.
I understand that I have the largest budget in the city, and I understand that, that we're seen by many as uniquely different than the rest of the departments, but I have a lot of sympathy, a lot of respect for all the, all the departments and what they do and the limited budgets they have. So any way that I can help to alleviate pain and suffering on their part, which is also what the city needs as those things-
Sure.
-is I want to make sure I'm a good steward that way as well. So I've been very mindful of that ever since I've been doing this job, that, you know, that's just a personality that I have anyway. Don't take from somebody else just to get what you need.
Right.
Find a way to do it if you can. So we, I've got great staff, I've got great civilian staff that help, that have much more knowledge on the finances than I do, that helped me through all that, and we work through it, and we, we pick it apart. We figure out, you know, we try to be devil's advocate with each other and figure out where, where are we short-falling? And we get with, with Michelle on finance and say, is our line of thinking right?
Well, she'll let you know.
Oh, trust me, she'll let you know. But I try, I try to make sure that we got our ducks in a row, that we're not, you know, playing with monopoly money.
Yeah.
You know, we, we want to play with the real money and, and make sure that what I'm coming to the table with is truly what I'm saying I'm coming to the table with, so.
Well, Chief, it's always a pleasure to talk to you, and there's always something new happening. So I mean, I, I think I could talk to you probably every couple of days, and there'd be something new to report on your side.
There's, there's all kinds of things in the works that, you know, a lot of what-
Some you can tell, some you can't.
Some we can, some we can't. We're not ready to talk about them yet.
It's the nature of your business.
But there's some, there's some good things on the horizon, there's some things that we, as the Police Department are involved in that will probably surprise the, the general public that, why is the Police Department involved in that? But it's just, we're the tip of the spear, we touch everybody, and we have that kind of ability to say, let's take it, so let's try it. And, and so we, you know, we're working on a lot of preventative measure type stuff, trying to, trying to keep things from happening, which is ultimately the thing you want to do.
Right.
Is if you can prevent it, then you don't have a victim.
Yeah.
If you don't have a victim, you know, the trauma doesn't happen to anybody, and the suffering doesn't happen to anybody. You know, so I know it's not a realistic thing that you can make that happen completely, but you should always be striving for that.
Sure.
And that's what we, we're in a business, try to put ourselves out of business, even though we know we never would, but try as hard as we can. And that's what we do. I think we do a great job. I know the guys, the men and women, the people of this community should be really satisfied with what they have because they work really hard. They work really hard, and they're really good at what they do.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative of what you do and all of the staff at HPD, and certainly doesn't go unnoticed, I know, by many who also share the same sentiments. And look forward to everything you have coming up, and we'll be noticing as, as it goes. And again, a pleasure talking to you. Thank you for doing this today.
Same here.
I will, yeah, I, I will be back next week, or actually, probably the week after that, not after a regular session, but after the next work session. For now, that's a wrap, and I will see you next time on Council Wrap.